Good evening, and welcome to the McKinnon Council Chambers for tonight's public hearing on the town budget. On behalf of the town manager, Charles Blanchard, and myself, John Daniel, the Chair of the Council, I welcome you all for being here this evening. At this point, I'll turn it over to Mr. Blanchard to begin the presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'll go up to the audience again. Okay, good evening. I'm pleased to present the final fiscal year 2024 proposed operating and capital budget in accordance with the Massachusetts general laws and the Home Rule Charter of the Town of Southbridge for the consideration and adoption by the town council. As Town Council Chair Daniel stated at the beginning of the budget process in March, this was a unique and unusual budget process due to the departure of the town manager, as well as the finance and DPW directors, who had worked together to produce the town's previous operating and capital budgets. All departments were instructed to submit a level service budget, assuming the FY23 budget as the base. Assistant Town Manager Adriana Robaina, Town Accountant Christine Russell, Executive Assistant Hannah Prescott, and I met with all department heads to review their proposed budgets line by line in order to present a level service balance budget. I'd like to thank Adriana, Christine, and Hannah for their support and participation in reviewing and compiling this budget, as well as all of our department heads and staff members for their dedication, professionalism, and support in the preparation of the budget. I believe that the $68.1 million budget presented tonight meets the community's needs for FY 2024 within the established policies of reasonable property tax increases with limits of proposition two and a half state aid, local receipts, and available funds. Okay, the first slide we have here is a summary of the overall proposed budget. Cherry sheet revenues and charges are based on the Governor's House One budget and could change based on the final state budget that has been adopted. Chapter 70 has seen a significant increase that helps fund the increase in the school budget. Unrestricted general government aid is shown with a 2% increase. For your information, a 1% shift in the unrestricted general government aid is approximately $40,000 for our budget. The House Ways and Means budget proposed at 1.6, I used the 2% that was in the Governor's House One budget, and I believe today or yesterday the Senate Ways and Means recommended 3.2%. But that will be finalized when the final state budget is approved. Local receipts have been level funded. They've met our needs. I didn't see any opportunity for real increases in that, so those were level funded. Insurance is up significantly due to an 8.27% increase in our health insurance for 2024, and our retirement assessment is up over 5%. This is more of an expanded sheet showing the breakdown of the revenues. New growth is estimated at $250,000. I've spoken to our assessor about that. She feels that number is achievable, but we should not be looking for a much higher number than that. In previous years, the budget had started out with a lower new growth number, but when it was finally certified, it came in higher, and I can explain that a little bit more as we talk about some of the other things that go on here. The actual tax levy proposed in this budget would be approximately 1.1 million below our maximum allowable levy if the council decides to appropriate $250,000 from free cash to reduce the tax rate. Otherwise, it would be approximately $870,000 below the maximum allowable levy. Transfers from other available funds, which come to about $1,580,000, are from sources that are unique to Southbridge and have been verified by the town accountant. In talking to Christine, our town accountant, she's also looking at those to make sure that they will be available, and what level they'll be available at in future years, because they are related to enterprises and things that have been changed recently. As far as the expenses, the breakdown of each department total in the general government budget is shown on the next slide. An overview of this is that the debt services is up only 1.1% due to continued short-term borrowing in FY 2024, but will increase in the next few years due to the town's commitment to fund infrastructure improvement projects such as in the new fire station. More information on that will be discussed when the proposed capital budget is reviewed. The education budget, I have a little more information on that in a future slide, but the education budget has been, you know, reviewed by public presentation and so forth, and I think the council has had plenty of opportunity to actually review and question that particular budget. This is a summary of the general government operating budget. The overall increase in the general government operating budget is 3.68%. These budgets have been reviewed by the subcommittees and reflect, for the most part, recommendations that were made by the subcommittees during those reviews. This was a slide that I received from the presentation that the school department made, and it's indicating here that the required local contribution is projected to increase at approximately $600,000 annually for the next three years. Moving on to the capital planning committee recommendations, the combined total of the proposed capital funding is $995,000, of which $500,000 would come from the capital stabilization fund and $495,000 from free cash. These items are for the fire department, the radio replacement project, the SCBA air packs for the police department, duty weapons, two police cruisers, epoxy flooring for the library, a boiler, and for the school, a phone system upgrade, emergency repairs, and a maintenance truck with snowplows. The summary on the side there for the capital stabilization shows that we would have a balance of $1 million if the council approves these expenditures, and with free cash, we would still have almost $2.5 million available for other sources or to carry over for free cash next year. The next slide is the summary of those infrastructure projects that I mentioned earlier. These are projects that the town council has committed to over the past few years. The first two are from the small bridge project. That work was supposed to be done at the end of this year. Engineering took longer than apparently expected, and we were able to actually, our DPW director, Rich Brnoy, was able to request an extension, so we have a two-year extension on that small bridge grant to be able to complete those projects. The next two are the tip projects. The East Main roadway project is from Mass Works, plus obviously town and water commitments. The rail trail has significant grants from Mass DOT, the EDA, and has a town commitment as well. That project is the one that's anticipated to go out soonest. I believe they have plans to bid that in October, and so construction would start in the spring. We also have the Crane and River Street improvements, a CDBG grant. The last one is, I think, in the early stage. It is requesting $11 million for significant improvements in Hamilton Street, but I don't believe we'll hear about that grant for several months. So these projects were all shown in the FY23 capital plan with potential funding starting in FY24. Due to the scheduling of the actual work, those amounts have been moved on to FY25 and beyond. So that is a brief overview of the budget. I don't know if there's any questions for now.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the town manager, if everything goes well tonight and everything's approved, with the free cash that you mentioned, about $2.5 million left, what is your plan with that funding?
Well, I mean, there's that option of applying some of it to reduce the tax rate. And again, I'm not advocating for that or against that. It's just that when communities have a sustained free cash of in the order of $3 million or so, it's not unusual to apply some of that to reduce the tax rate. So as we move forward with the budget, if you wish to do that, I can show you some estimates on what it might do to the tax rate. We of course can't predict what next year's tax rate will be because we don't have the evaluations. The best thing we can do to try to put it in perspective would be to apply any increases that are passed in this budget to the current valuation. So we'd be looking at a number, but it's not really a real number as far as what the actual tax rate would be, because that would change based on changes in the overall valuation. But we can see how much it would impact. It would basically, using that free cash, would basically, you know, reduce the increase by about 20%.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
The other use for it would be, we have not addressed the OPEB needs either. I noticed in reviewing last year's budget, it wasn't done at this particular meeting. You did it in June, and that would be another potential use for free cash, whatever, you know, we'd like to contribute to OPEB.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counsel Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. Just going over the agenda for the public hearing here, and I don't know if there's any residents that are here. They should probably talk first, but if they're not, then I will go ahead and ask my questions. But your first agenda item, review of five-year capital plan, and, oh, okay, I'd be happy to wait till... This is a public hearing. If Mr. Shenier wants to speak first, I would let him.
Very good. Please identify yourself.
Thank you, George Shenier, Teresa Ave, Southbridge. I come forward tonight because of these expenditures that are being done and said, work in the polls, work in the streets. The average taxpayer in this community feels they're not going to be able to afford the proposed increases that are being done. They're also very unhappy with the way the school system is being run. They came into this town about six years ago, seven years ago, with the promises of helping our school system become a better school system, because we're failing. The average person out there, the average taxpayer, feels that nothing has changed, that the state takeover is a failed takeover by the state, and they want to take their schools back. What I'm asking tonight, it may be a symbolic move, but I'm asking council tonight to not approve the school budget of $34 million. My feelings is, if the state wants to take over the school, let them pay the freight. I realize it's going to be a symbolic move if you guys decide to do that, but I think it sends a clear message to the state, to our governor, that it's not working here in Southbridge, and that the residents of this community want the school back. So I strongly urge counselors to look at themselves, look at their budget, and vote no on a $34 million school budget, which is more than half of the taxes that are being proposed. Thank you.
Any other citizens that would like to address the council and the town manager? Very well. Counsel Mark Hedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So looking at the public hearing agenda, agenda item number one, review of five-year capital plan, committee recommendations. First of all, we don't work on a five-year plan. The council did vote to go to a five-year plan, but the charter still says a six-year plan. Maybe by next year, we will switch it to a five-year. Council all felt that was a good idea, but as of yet, we're still working on a six-year plan. And the plan that you submitted tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that last year's six-year plan that you presented? It looks like it's the same.
Yeah, it's my understanding that we're actually more years than that in there. I did think that the recommendation was for a five-year plan. I apologize for that, but we can certainly add the six-year in there.
Okay. And then at the bottom, it says copies of FY23 budget are available. Do you mean '23 or '24?
Which one is that?
It's on your agenda. So at the bottom, it says copies of FY23 budget.
It would be the 20...
'24.
The summary is certainly available. You have the copies of the budget in the book, so yeah, it probably meant '24.
So I guess I'll save my questions on the capital budget itself until the meeting, if that's the will of the council. We are going, I take it, we're going to go through the capital budget during the agenda item. But I do have questions about the capital budget itself. As far as the budget itself, there were a lot of changes this year, a lot of changes. We had so many changes, so many times when there was no one there to answer questions at our committees, and I am not blaming you. I understand we had a difficult situation with the town manager and the finance director, both leaving right before our budgets began. But we did have a lot of meetings, a lot of questions, a lot of changes that were emailed, but having them an email in one spot and hard copy in another, I don't really believe we have an actual clean copy of the budget. At some point, I mean, I would expect that we would have that clean copy. I kind of was hoping we would have a complete, brand-new summary and all, because I think even your summary has changed a little bit.
Well, it's changed quite a bit, actually, from the first time we went forward.
Right.
It's sort of tall.
I mean, just as I...
Counsel Mark Hedy, I certainly would throw the chair to you. I certainly apologize for that, but on the other hand, the transitions really had a tremendous impact. I mean, I came on board here, and it was really not any opportunity to really convey or discuss with anyone who had actually prepared the budget what was really there. So on that first one that we were kind of scrambling to get to by the required date on, you know, in March, when it was, they were out here making copies the night of the meeting, if you recall. I hadn't had an opportunity to even look into what the issue was with the health insurance budget. I think in the first draft that I had given you, I had mentioned there that that's generally a number that has a reserve in it, because it's something that you could hit, you know, double-digit increases in your health insurance, and because you get changes and so forth. So you like to have a good cushion in there. And then it was a week or so later when I was able to dig into that a little bit more that I realized the impact of the change in from the 60/40 to the 70/30 split. And so there was quite a bit of juggling that had to be done there. So I agree, it is not really the ideal way to do things, but I believe that the budget I presented meets the needs. It's consistent with addressing the issues that have been addressed in the past, and I believe it's, you know, a budget that's fair for the community, it's fair for the departments, and I think it's a good budget to move forward with.
I mean, I was going to, and I think you just talked about it a little bit, I was going to just speak about one example. I was at a general government subcommittee meeting. We talked about general insurance budget, and it was presented as a $719,000, and then it was postponed, and that was the April 13 meeting, and it was postponed to the April 26 meeting, which I was not able to attend. I did watch the video, and then it was presented as $749,000, but there was no one there to explain the $20,000 jump in the cost of that budget item. And I don't think I ever received a printout of why the change in that budget. Maybe that is what you just were talking about.
No, I believe they were sent out.
Well, I did check my emails, but I didn't see that. But I do know that during the subcommittee, there were no officials attending the meeting to even explain what that was about. Counsel Ryan called it unorthodox. Counsel Steve said it was very odd not to have someone at meetings to explain these things. And like, again, Charlie, I'm not blaming you. I understand it was, you were put into a very difficult situation.
Well, actually, I am the one you should blame. I mean, I'm putting the budget together, so I don't mind blaming me.
This has been a very strange budget session. I mean, I've never seen it like this. We always had, every budget meeting, someone there to explain. We went through each line item, and it's kind of been a little haphazard this year. In the end, general government did not even recommend that general insurance budget. They sent it up with no recommendation, but it is in our budget packet, I guess. The other issue, numerous times, you have explained to me that you were unsure, you weren't able to reconcile the free cash for general water sewer, water department stabilization, general stabilization. You were just on it. You said you were unable to find those funds? At one point, you said that to me? Have you ever found those funds?
Well, actually, we do need to do some reconciliation on those accounts.
Okay.
Definitely, we do need to do that.
And then the water department? They presented a capital budget. They moved some requests out of capital, which is in the capital plan tonight. They removed that out, put it into their operating budget. So that has already, now, that's already changed our capital budget as it is being presented tonight. The sewer department capital requests, I noticed that in their, they have a lot of capital requests going way back to FY16, and I question whether some of those are, have already been funded and just the money is still sitting there and never used. I know that the sewer has over $6 million in their capital budget. The water has over $4 million in their capital budget, and the general has 2.5 million in capital budget funds that have been untouched, unused, and I'm questioning why we're not going through those and finding, if we could find some of that funding, then we could lower the tax rate. We wouldn't have to have a 6-point, what is it, 6.3 increase this year? So I'm not understanding why we don't go through those and try and get some of the funds out of there to offset this spending.
Well, I mean, the, you know, the capital funds that would be in the water and the sewer would be enterprise funds. It really, you know, wouldn't affect the tax rate, but certainly we can address that.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel McTigney.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you very much for everything you've done. This is my first budget here as well, so I'm happy to be a part of it. In here, I just want to take the time, since we have the time before the meeting, which is already going to be long. If you could explain the cable operating account, the budget there, and how the fact that we don't have a franchise agreement affects this? Are we still getting portions of the bill from...
Yeah, we still are getting the money for that.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's why we're able to handle it the same way, where we show the cable budget, and then we show the resources, you know, coming in from the agreement. In fact, it's my understanding, although I haven't had a chance in the last week or so to check with our attorney, we're very close to agreement with them to continue it, but nonetheless, they still fund it at the same rate that was funded before.
Great. That's fantastic news. Thank you for that update. The only citizen that spoke, Mr. Shenier, brought up a good point about the schools. Couldn't get a straight answer at subcommittee, or I guess what I should say is, I was given an answer, and then I was told later by a few people that that answer was incorrect. So I just would like for peace of mind here. What is minimum school expenditure? Is the school budget $34,017,145, and what exactly is school, minimum school expenditure? Because I was told at that meeting that that was it, but then a couple different people told me that we were actually funding it 100.4% of what the minimum school expenditure was, so I'm confused. I just want to be sure.
From what I've seen in, you know, the budget presented and the information that I've gotten from the business manager, we are funding it this year at the minimum required contribution. There's nothing excess in there beyond that.
Okay, because I've gotten multiple people that, you know, have more experience than me have come and told me 100.4%, but you have somewhere a number of minimum school expenditure is $34,017,145? I don't know if anybody in this room has that. I guess I just don't know where I'm getting that 100.4%, but, you know, it was told to me by two different people, or if anybody up here.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I may be wrong. I know last year, we funded it 100.4.
Last year?
Last year.
And this is 100.0? Sorry to be talking out of turn like this. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it.
From my understanding, it's 100, but last year, we did 100.4.
Okay.
I think that's what, I think that's what the numbers were last year.
100.0 this year? Okay. Just wanted that clarification, and thank you so much.
Any other counselors? Counsel Lozlo.
To the previous, a couple of previous speakers, I don't disagree with the Counsel Mark Hedy on some of his thought process, but I just want to take a minute to just thank the town manager and the finance department on putting this together. I've been through many town budgets, school budgets. There's a lot of interesting concepts on minimum school expenditure and how they work the numbers to make it a certain way. I know that this town has paid over the minimum school expenditure since I've been on council. Maybe somebody should just ask a simple question. What is minimum school expenditure? How much do we spend on the minimum expenditure per pupil? Where are we on the chart? A lot of these questions are very common questions that were answered every year, and Southbridge has always stepped up and paid more than what the minimum was. But one of the things that probably aggravated me was how unprofessional some of the people that exited the community from these departments and what they left us behind for paperwork, financial docs, all of it. It seemed like we really had a tough time putting the budget together, locating the numbers. Department heads, new department heads that came on trying to find out where the project numbers were and stuff. It was amazing how we thought we had such a wonderful finance department and a finance person, and then when a person leaves, all of a sudden, we find all the buried treasure. Moving forward, I think we have two good finance director and accountant treasurer. I commend Charlie on getting this budget together. This has not been the most chaotic budget I've dealt with. We've had worse. I think you did a good job as far as getting it forward, meeting the deadlines, and then doing the job as per charter and as per state law. We can argue over the numbers. We can say this department deserves more, that's more important. That's our job. But I was very dissatisfied with the, what our people had to go through, including yourself, to locate numbers and to get the pulse of the finance department, but I think you did a good job doing it. I think people have come forward, stepped up, staffed, and got the job done. Going forward, we'll probably have a difference of agreement on what to add, what to cut, but that's been a common practice by government. And I'd just like to thank you, Charlie, and the people behind you.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams. Okay. Any other counselors? Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. First, I just want to thank Charlie and all of his staff for all this work. You know, a lot of communities around us are looking at much bigger increases because they weren't prepared for this, and you came in, you know, ran in, you know, at the beginning of the season and got us a budget that not only focuses on our needs and tightens where we need to tighten, but kept the rates low enough and compares to many of the towns around us. So I thank you for that. I'm personally, I understand the sentiment to want to vote no on something or on the budget. My belief is that the politics of whether or not, how people feel is going to come out of the ballot box. I'd rather keep that there and keep this about the procedure. There's nothing that's going to happen. It's not going to change. Voting yes or no on this is still mandated by state law that this is the that this is the minimum we're going to have to give, since we're right at it. I'd rather keep the politics and how people feel at the ballot box, not here. So I too, I am going to support the budget tonight, even though I have many concerns that I will bring up during the main meeting. But I want to thank your team just again, because you guys did a lot of hard work really quickly. And the fact that you were so responsive to the councillors while you were going through this process of updating and getting the best budget possible, it's just great for an interim, but like, I really appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you very much.
Any other councillors? Any citizens that would like to approach? Counsel Lozo.
To the previous speaker, I can't help myself. When you do a budget and leave the politics out of it, it's taking politics out of politics. Makes no sense whatsoever. I think what we have in front of us are issues, and it takes politics in a good way to straighten out some issues. A lot of people don't like my style, because I like to identify a problem. That's the only way you can solve a problem, sitting up here and saying, "Thank you, great job, thank you, great job." And all of a sudden, the train hits the wall, and why did that happen? Well, obviously, someone was sleeping at the wheel while it happened. So moving forward, we are politicians, we're elected officials. Use whatever word you want. This is very, very political. The process is political, and we are going to do the best job we can for the taxpayers, or at least what we think is the best job for the taxpayers. And when people have an opinion, they come up to the podium and they air their opinion. I respect their opinion. I might not agree with it, but the thing is, it's not politics. It's exactly what it is. You know, I think it's an opinion. Whether someone wants to interpret it a certain way or not, that's fine. But I still think that what, when we move forward on a budget, a lot of it is political as far as, well, why did you do that? Well, I'm up for election, so everything's got to look good. Or that, that's turning it into the political. But the thing is, you turn around and look at the networking that the councillors do as politicians, with the department head, the manager and everything, it works in a good way. Politics is not a dirty word, if it's used correctly. If it's used incorrectly, then obviously, it's dirty politics. But I got to say, this council here, for the most part, keeps it on the up and up when it comes to the political stuff. We shoot straight, we call it what it is, and we get on with it after the vote. It's not personal. That's why it's politics in a good way. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Hattie.
Just like a clarification now, if you don't mind. So in the agenda that you presented, $72,66,405, and the printout that you're giving, $68,132,84. So is, am I reading that right?
No, there were, there were some adjustments that had to be made after that advertisement was posted.
Okay.
We did find more information, and we did modify that.
Okay, and I think I understand what Counselor Ryan is saying. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Steve.
Actually, I wanted to follow up with what Counsel Mike Hattie just asked. The packet that I have in front of me, the electronic version, has the grand total of being $70,414,909.
Which count, what do you have?
It's the May 22nd, 2023 voting document in our packet. It's the third page of the document. It says $70,414,909. The number you gave was $72,066,405. Our original budget says $76,701,135.
Could you speak into the mic, please?
These numbers are all over the place.
Okay.
So if we could have a little clarification on, on why there's so, so much difference? Because there's, I don't recall seeing a previous budget year, and I've been up here for nine years, where I've seen so much difference between these budgets.
Okay.
I realize you had to do an awful lot of stuff in a short period of time. I completely respect that.
No, it actually, we actually went through, and everything has been prepared in the voting document and in the, in the agenda as it was last year. You know, the differences that you have in there are, for example, when the enterprise funds come into it, and, you know, we've checked each of these numbers, and they do tie into the operating budget of $68.1 million that we gave you. And so as we go through the voting document, we can go through it in, you know, more detail. But each one of these was, was tracked and compared with last year's budget and this year's budget and updated for the offsetting transfers that we made to have the correct numbers. So they should all be coming together.
They should be. I agree that they should. That's what I, what I was asking about. Why, why, I mean, it's like, it's like we're not looking at the same budget year half the time. And I know I'm looking at the May 2023 budget. So that's why I'm just trying to clarify.
So which, which numbers are you questioning, councillor?
Because my, okay, my, from my document, today's voting document, page three, which is in our packet, our general fund total says $62,456,0, I think it's zero, nine, six.
Sixty-two, right.
Okay, and then the grand total comes out as $70,414,909.
Right.
And the number you gave just a few minutes ago was $72,066,405. I mean, where are these numbers coming from?
Where's the $72,066? What document? If you don't mind me asking, it's on the agenda.
I thought you said it a few minutes ago, didn't you?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
For the public.
Oh, they would have been the public hearing. That would have been the difference in the overall, the actual advertisement for the budget, for the hearing was corrected. These are the corrected numbers.
These are the corrected numbers? So that 72 that you're seeing was our original number plus the enterprise funds? And then once we had multiple meetings and clarified what the enterprise funds were, that's when you're seeing these updated numbers. So if you're looking at the general fund totals on the voting doc, which I know that everyone can't see, but the general fund totals, that is our general operating without our state aid. Then you look across, if we, you know, less out some transfers, you've got the 62,455. So that's what we're trying to appropriate. And then if you add in those enterprise funds, you get those bigger numbers down at the bottom. If you're looking at your meeting agenda, not the public hearing agenda, there's some other numbers that are the same as the voting doc. But these are final balanced. I've ripped out so many hairs to balance this, I promise. There was even a broken formula in the voting doc, original document I had to fix. So I'm happy to clarify further and sorry for interrupting Charlie.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel.
Um, I guess, but that, that actually makes me wonder as if she was finding an issue with the, the way the formula was calculating budgets now. How long have we been seeing that issue that we didn't see it?
Well, I believe your budgets have, if I may, Mr. Chair, have worked out in the past. So I, I think that whatever.
I hope it did.
Formula she found in there, the numbers, you know, worked out.
I'll yield. If somebody else has something to say?
I do.
Counsel McTigney.
Thank you. This document just isn't the same as the budget printouts we keep getting, so I just can't find it personally. Can we just clarify that the recommendation from subcommittee made it through for full-time assistant in the inspections office?
It did, yes.
It did. Okay, so it's in this budget. Thank you. That was.
Right.
Yep, thanks.
And, and the other thing that helped fund that within the budget, I, close to the budget I had presented before that, was the fact that I had reduced, and I guess it was the recommendation, I think of the, I forget which subcommittee, for the reserve fund to be $80,000 instead of $100,000. So you'll see that change in there as well.
Okay, yeah, and you got rid of that third position in the office, which was almost a wash.
The inspector, construction inspector position has not been included in there, right?
No, I meant the, okay, I got what you're saying. Thank you.
Counsel Mike Hattie.
I was just going to ask, just if, what would happen if we doubled the free cash contribution? Would that have a significant impact on the tax rate?
Adding that 250,000?
Yeah, adding, doubling it, instead of 250, making it 500.
Right, well, you know, I was going to, I can certainly discuss it now if you'd like. Let's see. So as I mentioned, we really don't know what next year's tax rate will be, because we don't know what the valuation and so forth will be. But assuming you pass, you know, this budget as presented, and then we assume further that we had the same evaluation, same FY '23 evaluation used now, all right? And also that the average single-family house price didn't change, which it probably will. But assuming it didn't, this budget would add, would increase the tax rate from $15.84 to $16.76. That would move our average single-family tax bill from $45,12, $4,512, which it was in FY '23, to a projected $4,774, an increase of $262. And that compares with the increase last year that the tax, average single-family tax bill went up $246. If you were to apply the $250,000 to reduce the tax rate, then the tax rate would be down to $16.60, and it would be $216. So it would save $46 on the average single-family home. And again, none of those numbers are cast in concrete, because we don't know what the rate will be and what the valuation will be. But to put it in perspective, the average single-family tax bill would go up approximately, well, to $262 from $246, and it could be reduced to approximately $216 by applying the $250,000. You know, not saying, several communities do that, but one thing is, once you decide to do it, you should be prepared to do it each year, because the one year you decide not to do that, then you'll have that extra increase hitting it as well. When I looked at this budget with the $3 million we have in free cash and the use you've had in the past, the fact that we're spending less out of free cash now for capital than the previous year, it's something that could be done, but again, it's a decision the council would have to make.
All right, thank you.
Counsel Adams.
I'm good. I'll wait for the actual budget.
Very good. Any other councillors? Any other citizens? Mr. Manager, any last words?
I'm sorry?
Any last words, Mr. Manager?
No, I think that's fine. Thank you very much.
Very good. At this point then, I'll close the hearing. This hearing is now closed.